If the board approves this ordinance, it will be in place until December 16th, 2025 only. So if this were approved, which would allow cultivation and processing with some exceptions and buffers, et cetera, as provided in the staff report, it still will only be in place until December 16th, 2025. Cultivation or processing of hemp in violation of the ordinance is declared to be a public nuisance subject to abatement and the imposition of administrative penalties. Cultivation and processing of hemp is prohibited except as follows: With a license issued by the Agricultural Commissioner for cultivation or the Development Services Director for processing hemp with the payment of the deposit, which, as stated, is $7,500 plus bond or security equal to full cost of abatement. On land-zoned agricultural, food processing, agricultural and recreation combining district or general industrial, known as M2. With the following minimum setbacks: 2.5 miles or 13,200 feet from any incorporated city limit line, the boundaries of the Sutter Point specific plan, and any hospital, convalescent facility providing 24-hour care, senior living facility excluding small residential care homes, place of worship, child daycare center, private and public, K through 12 school, youth-oriented facility, after-school program, park, or sports complex; and .25 miles, 1,320 feet, from any off-site residence not owned or leased by the licensee without the express written consent of the owner of that residence. An exception exists for processing if it is conducted within a detached, fully enclosed, secure accessory structure that is equipped with odor control filtration and ventilation systems adequate to prevent industrial hemp plant odors from exiting the interior of the structure. Only in the open air and in-ground only, and shall not be grown in movable pots or similar containers or in enclosures such as greenhouses or hoop houses. No usage of outdoor grow lights shall be permitted between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. unless the glare is not visible from any neighboring property. Registration may be denied if inaccurate or incomplete information is provided in the application if there were violations in the past of the requirements, failure to pay fees, deposits, or penalties imposed, and previously subject of a nuisance finding. Enforcement is subject to county discretion. And those are the major points. So making this recommendation was a difficult decision because I have a lot of respect for county staff and I have a lot of respect for the farming community here in Sutter County. The Agricultural Commissioner, and I think she may be here to speak, and I respect her opinion a lot. And I think, and I don't want to speak for her. I will just briefly say, even though I think she supports some of the things that are in the ordinance, overall, she does not support this ordinance. And I met with her and agricultural staff who had real concerns about their safety when visiting hemp processors and cultivation locations. I'm not saying that is necessarily any of those folks that are maybe here today. But when as far as to, I spoke with Sheriff Barnes about the possibility of deputies being able to escort, when available, Agricultural Commissioner staff to locations, which he is open to that. However, we don't know if we'll always have staff available to do so. So that would take some scheduling. That's not a guarantee, but that is something that may be provided for Agricultural Commissioner staff. We've had issues in here when I mentioned the part about only in the open air and in-ground and not in movable pots or similar containers. We've had issues where agricultural staff go to inspect and when they go back the following day or later that week, the plants have disappeared. That doesn't make sense in most situations that I can think of. Why would a plant disappear? Again, I don't think this applies to the couple hemp cultivation farmers that I see here tonight. I don't know everyone here tonight, but the few that I have talked to that I think will speak, this has not applied to them in the past. So I just want to be clear about that. But that we have had ongoing complications with hemp growers. Of course, there can be complications in any of the agricultural industries. But we have had issues here. We've had an issue where in a neighboring county, a warehouse that had marijuana in it had a Sutter County hemp certificate on it. But it was actually marijuana and tested positive for marijuana. So we have had issues on and on again. I realize you don't want to punish the, say, the good. You only want to punish the bad apple, so to speak. And normally, I'm sorry, the board would normally have a lot of these comments, and I'm sure they will. But this is kind of an exception for me where I feel passionate about this, that I want to really explain my recommendation. I also realize that some of the farmers that have worked with us in talking through these ordinance with these restrictions have invested hundreds of thousands of dollars in this county, at least for this year, that is already in place, that if an ordinance isn't approved, that money would be lost. And I have a real difficult time with that as well. So it is with all of that in mind that I make this recommendation that the board approve the cultivation of hemp, which essentially is for this year. This will have to be addressed this fall or winter. And it's with that hesitation that I do make this recommendation to move forward. So I'm happy to answer any questions. We have a map available that we can go over and we'll explain. In fact, we can maybe bring that up now unless the board would like me to zip it and you could take over.
No, go ahead and proceed.
Okay. So we have Jarvis Jones here from, he's our geographic information specialist. Oh, that map's hard to... Are you able to blow that up, Jarvis? Or... Okay. Instead of blow up?
I can blow up a certain area if you're interested.
Okay.
Is there something you want to see?
Why don't we enlarge the northern part, kind of north of you? But yeah, that would do. So as mentioned, the two-and-a-half-mile restrictions, the town of Sutter is there. You know, the big circle is the buttes in the center. So the darker yellow is the buttes themselves. The town of Sutter is kind of in that other circle, yeah, where Jarvis is moving the mouse pointer there. Because we did have significant community complaints from the town of Sutter regarding smells. And there was a grow that was just 1,000 feet, I think, from the high school. So that was causing problems as well.
Through the chair, Steve, would you mind if he... Because a lot of people haven't seen this map. Today is the first time they're seeing this map. So if Jarvis can explain the colors and... Because they can't read it.
Sure. So...
Can you do that on, does he have a microphone? Oh, he's on it? Okay.
The restrictions that Steve explained are kind of outlined here. So the colors were active licensed hemp grows for last year. This kind of a lavender color, these are areas that the zoning would not allow for hemp cultivation. These sort of dark orange colors, like you can see this large one here, these are the sensitive receptors. They include all those things that Steve mentioned before. If you go farther down the county, you have Sutter Point, which is here, this kind of a red color. And then the other restriction are, what we tried to do was map anything that might be a residential address. So when you see the dark colors, that would be the sensitive receptor, the facility. And then the lighter, but kind of similar color would be the two-and-a-half-mile buffer. So there's your sensitive receptor buffer. There's your quarter-mile buffer from any house. Every one of those tiny blue dots is probably residential, although there could be some of those that aren't residential. It's just our best estimate from a, you know, 40,000-foot view. And then this sort of a pink color would be two-and-a-half miles from Sutter Point.
I'm through the chair. So what I'm getting at, Jarvis, is show the community of Sutter and then show, so that yellowish, baby food color, green or yellow, whatever, that is a perimeter right there. That's the two-and-a-half-mile zone around the community.
Yes. So in some cases, what you have is just overlapping exclusion areas, right? So if you were to say, look at this property here, it's not zoned right. It's within a quarter mile of a residence. It's within two-and-a-half miles of a school or a church or something. So you're really looking for places that are in this white area where you could possibly grow.
Mr. Smith, did you want to go ahead and continue your presentation before I take any further board comments? Because I wanted to finish the presentation, your presentation first, then we'll bring back to the board for any further questions.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So essentially on that map, and if you zoom back out a bit, you can grow in the white areas. All of the blue, all of the colors are restricted for various reasons. So it is greatly restricted based upon locations of unincorporated towns, incorporated cities, and residences and other sensitive users. I think in summary, this will, as mentioned, regardless of what happens today, the board is going to have to readdress this come December. So if it is approved, for cultivation is approved for this year, it will give us a chance to monitor with these restrictions, the newer restrictions and requirements, and see if it's been an issue for this coming summer. Because we also had issues where, as stated in the last meeting regarding this, the costs to the county at times have been significant as well. So we have introduced fees to cover that cost so that we're hoping there's no, I guess, additional cost to the county to approve this ordinance. So that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Smith. And with that, we're going to open up the public hearing. I will ask that we, ask the clerk if we could limit comments to two minutes because we have a lot of comments today and we really don't want to be here all night. So two minutes, and it will be a strict two minutes. So at two minutes, if you're still talking, we're going to cut you off. So I just want you to know that upfront. We do want to hear what you have to say. We have received multiple letters, phone calls, and we've spoken to many of you. But two minutes is good enough for today, okay? So with that, Madam Clerk, if you would call up the first speaker.
Our first public speaker is Janine Thibodeau.
Okay. I would have to be the first one, wouldn't I? Okay. And I live in Sutter. So I speak from first personal knowledge of all of this. And I'm really surprised to be here again today addressing the same issue. This makes me feel that you told us last meeting just what we wanted to hear so we would go home and then you could bring it back. And that does make trust issues. I spoke with Sutter High School student about a week ago, and he started laughing and he goes, "Oh, yeah, we can smell the hemp throughout the whole school." So this is what we want our students to have to go through. I am concerned about them. I don't know if you are, but I am. Previously, the letter from the Ag Commissioner stated that the financial burden cannot be disregarded. That program accumulated $415,827 shortfall. And I'm sure there's probably more we don't know about. Sutter County tried passing a bond stating it was needed for salaries, law enforcement, and fire departments. Just think what that $400,000 could have covered, especially with our fire services. Because Sutter Community Fire Department is really hurting for money. If you try to do a future bond, how can you convince people that you will be good stewards of the money? And I remember going to a meeting at the SYO building, and when the bond wasn't passed, we were told we would have given this much money for the fire department, this much money for the law enforcement. Trust us. Well, okay, this is what, you contradict yourselves. Okay. And I have to really remember what's more important, fire department or the hemp growers.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it.
Our next public speaker is Lisa Herbert.
Hello. Good afternoon, everybody. Seems as though I always draw a crowd. The night I was appointed was marijuana night, and that was February of 2016. So that was also a packed house, three-hour meeting that night. I want to thank County Administrator Smith and County Council Bill Vanisek for their excellent work and thoughtful consideration to this issue today. It is also a very difficult position for our staff to be in. It's a very difficult decision for us to come out against industrial hemp, knowing that we are here to promote and protect agriculture. But there's a lot of things that are glaring. It's an entire industry. It's not just one grower. So I'm going to read my letter that I entered into the public record. Honorable Chair and members of the County Boards of Supervisors, Lisa Herbert, Agricultural Commissioner and Sealer of Weights and Measures, thank you for your continued thoughtful consideration of the interim urgency ordinance imposing a temporary moratorium on the cultivation of industrial hemp within the incorporated areas of Sutter County. As the Agricultural Commissioner, I am tasked with providing sound, evidence-based recommendations on matters impacting agriculture and enforcement within the county. At the January 28th board meeting, I submitted a letter outlining my concerns regarding industrial hemp cultivation. Today, I again present critical information to support the most prudent and effective decision for the welfare of Sutter County. With extensive experience in agricultural regulation and enforcement, I speak not only as an administrator, but as a field-tested expert. Industrial hemp has consistently presented itself as a public nuisance, posing tangible risks to health, safety, and the broader well-being of our community. I urge you to weigh the perspectives of all stakeholders and to prioritize long-term policy stability over short-term political pressure. I must reiterate my firm opposition to allowing the cultivation of industrial hemp in Sutter County. Over the past years, six to be exact, my department has been overwhelmed by the complications this crop has brought, including an ongoing budget deficit, incidents of staff intimidation and safety risks during field inspections. As recently as today, I have had discussions with staff regarding their fear of enforcing this program, including when they go in the field, they send their location to their family members and other staff members so that somebody knows where they're at. That doesn't happen in other commodities, just so you know. A death threat made against me. Attempted bribery, including an incident where a grower tried to place cash into the Assistant Agricultural Commissioner's pocket during an inspection. Countless hours of public resources consumed by nuisance complaints and enforcement actions related to hemp operations. These challenges are not hypothetical. They are real, persistent, and disruptive to public service. In light of this, I believe the most responsible course of action is to prohibit industrial hemp cultivation in Sutter County entirely. Although I remain opposed to permitting industrial hemp cultivation, I have reviewed and contributed feedback on the draft ordinance currently before the board. County Council has developed a thoughtful regulatory framework. However, I must emphasize a critical fact. Every industrial hemp grower in Sutter County violated the 2021 ordinance. What assurance does this board have that the same will not occur again? If this board decides to adopt this ordinance despite my recommendation, I strongly urge the inclusion of a provision requiring a comprehensive, publicly available report on the 2025 growing season. This evaluation must be made available ahead of any decision to make this ordinance permanent in December. Thank you for your time and attention, and I remain committed to working collaboratively with this board to ensure the safety, integrity, and prosperity of Sutter County. My Assistant Ag Commissioner and two Deputy Ag Commissioners are here, and we are available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Lisa. We appreciate the work you do.
Our next public comment is Nicole Eberich.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is Nicole Eberich, and I am proud to be a resident of District 1 in Live Oak. And I work for Luke, Tyler, and CNC Farming. In the fall of 2020, after my job as an office manager at an oral surgery center was shut down due to COVID, my husband and I made the difficult decision to leave Marin County in search of a better future. We moved to Live Oak where the dream of homeownership and building a stable life felt possible again. We were blessed to find work with Luke and Tyler at CNC Farming. Over the past few years, we have weathered the ups and downs of the hemp industry here in Sutter County, always working hard and believing in the opportunity this industry provides. Today, my husband and I stand before you not just as employees, but as invested members of this community who care deeply about its future. We fully support the passing of this ordinance. Our livelihoods and the promise of a better life we came here to build depend on it. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Our next public speaker is Armando Sandoval.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is Armando Sandoval. I am a resident of Sutter County, District 3, and a longtime employee of Luke and Tyler at CNC Farming. I am a first-generation immigrant from Mexico, and I have worked in agriculture-related jobs in Sutter County since the day I was first able to obtain a work permit. In the summer of 2019, I was hired as a supervisor for the transplanting crew at CNC Farming. Throughout my dedication and work ethic, I impressed management, and I was offered a full-time, year-round position, managing field crews, processing crews, operating equipment, and overseeing shipping, receiving, and day-to-day operation. When I was about to be laid off for the season, Luke and Tyler instead offered me a full-time position, creating a more stable and predictable future for me and my family. I have four children and a wife who depend on my job. It would be a shame if this ordinance does not pass, forcing me to search for other full-time work. I have worked hard to earn my management position here, and I fear it would be very difficult to find something comparable, especially given the state of the commodities I am familiar with. This job has also given me the opportunity to start saving for my children's college funds so I can afford them more opportunities than I had coming to this country. This job is helping me achieve my American dream. Over the years, I have been able to hire many friends, family members, and prior coworkers, many of whom are here today. Our livelihoods depend on industrial hemp being allowed. Here in this Sutter County, I strongly urge you Supervisors to pass this ordinance today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next public speaker is Tyler Tumani.
Good afternoon, Board. My name is Tyler Tumani of CNC Farming. I'm one of the farmers here today fighting for the survival of my business and standing up for responsible hemp farming in Sutter County. Given the recent letter written by Lisa Herbert, our Ag Commissioner, I feel compelled to defend myself, our business, and how we operate. But I do want to set the record straight. We believe it's important to distinguish us from past problematic operators that have brought us to this point. From day one, we've worked closely with the Ag Department to ensure we are doing things the right way. And we've been told repeatedly we are not the problem. Becky, a member of the Ag Department staff, once said that walking through our fields felt completely different from the problem hoop house operations. She said our farm looks and feels like any other row crop in the county. That's because we treat it like any other row crop with care, compliance, and full transparency. In fact, the Ag Department felt comfortable enough to ask if they could fly a drone over our field to capture footage of our harvest. We welcomed it, just like we've always welcomed oversight. We've operated with an open-door policy and will continue that. Yet despite all this, we've been unfairly grouped in with the bad actors, accused of bribery, threats, and criminal behavior. They are serious acquisitions that we hope are prosecuted. We have obviously nothing to do with any of it. We are law-abiding, community-oriented farmers, and we deserve to be treated with the same respect and fairness as any other grower in Sutter County. It would be unthinkable to shut down an almond industry over one bad actor committing insurance fraud. But that's exactly what's happening to irresponsible hemp farmers like us, punished not for what we've done, but for what others have done under the same crop name. Let's be honest, we can't let outdated fears or personal frustration dictate public policy. Hemp is a state-mandated, regulated, responsible, and productive crop. It's grown by local farmers, your neighbors, who are following the rules, caring for the land, and contributing to our local economy. It also happens to be environmentally friendly. No pesticides, low water use, and when rotated properly, it even improves soil health. This crop helps us, helps us to not hurt our county. I have a few other things I'd like to say, but...
Sorry, we're going to cut you off on that, but appreciate your comments, okay?
Our next speaker is Tony Ruiz.
Hi, I'm Tony, and I live in District 3 here in Yuba City. And I want to thank the Supervisors for letting all of us speak today. I'm here to support Tyler. And I wanted to state some facts about the benefits of farming hemp in the community. It creates local jobs. It creates jobs across farming, processing, transportation, and support of industries. It brings in new revenue streams for farmers, offers a profitable alternative to traditional crops. It boosts our local economy. Hemp-related income circulates locally to small businesses serving hemp farmers and beyond. It attracts investments. It brings new facilities and innovation, bolstering the local tax bases, which is really important for all of us here today. It's diversification equals stability. It helps protect the agricultural economy from price and climate risks. And the environmental benefits, the soil health improves. Deep hemp roots break up compacted soil and reduce erosion, serving as an... soil and reduce erosion, serving as an optimal rotation crop. And like Tyler just said, the low water usage. For the fiber hemp, it uses less water than traditional crops like almonds or rice. It's a natural weed control, it denses growth, suppresses the weeds, it reduces herbicide use. In community and social benefits, it supports young farmers and families, creates very entry points for younger and first-generation farmers. It encourages responsible farming practices, promotes sustainable and regenerative agriculture. It enhances agricultural interventions, it drives research and adoption of better farming techniques. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Tony.
Our next speaker is Jose Rodriguez.
Hello Board, my name's Jose Rodriguez, I'm the manager of the Industrial Equipment and Parts Division at California Industrial over here in Yuba City. We have been a vendor for CNC Farming and Wilson Family Farm since they started, and have been doing business with their operations for over 50 years. In their current chestnut operation, we designed sorting systems to grade chestnuts that ran through our Yuba City branch that brought tax money back into Sutter County, not to mention all the replacement parts throughout the years and ongoing. In their Kiwi operation, we installed VFDs on their pumps to irrigate them, and provided parts for their packing house, bringing in more tax dollars for Sutter County as well. In their hemp operation, we designed a sorting conveyor that sped up processing times and quality. We are currently working on more conveying and sorting systems to meet their production demands coming up. Companies in Sutter will benefit from this. For example, we need hydraulic units from hydraulic controls in Yuba City, hardware from Dirco Supply in Yuba City, and many more. All in all, CNC Farming is a win for Sutter County. Hemp offers numerous benefits, ranging from health and nutritional advantages to environmental industrial uses. Hemp seeds are a good source of protein, essential fatty acids, and various minerals. Hemp oil can be used for skincare. Additionally, hemp grows fast and a versatile fiber that can be a sustainable material for various applications, including textiles and construction. Hemp will help in more manufacturing in the U.S. and all around. I support this ordinance for the good of Sutter County and the U.S., and urge you to pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is Liz Cervantes.
Honorable Chair, Supervisors, I'm Liz Cervantes, I live at 862 Country Lane in District Five in Sutter County, and I know that you can't answer me, I've been through enough meetings with y'all. I just am wondering why this is not going to the people for a vote? You guys have had no problem going to the people, pushing taxes, bonds, measures, whatever. Taxes? Please, I don't understand why you're putting yourselves in this position, but this is an off-ramp. This has not been pleasant, it's been real messy, and it sounds like the state is fluid in what's going on regarding hemp. That's all I wanted to say, is please consider bringing this to the people, full disclosure, you know, town halls, education. I think that this is an educational situation. I don't, I don't know anything about hemp. I hear that it does wonderful things, and I think I've used it in salad dressing. Thank you for your time and allowing us to speak, I'm happy with two minutes, I thought it was gonna go down to 30 seconds.
Thank you Liz. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is McCracka Family Farms.
Hi, thank you for having us today, my name is Teal, and this is my husband Dan, and we are residents out off of Pass Road. We are here to say we do not want this to pass. When we had the growers out by our house, it was absolutely horrendous what we had to deal with. The headaches, we couldn't run our whole-house fan, we couldn't run our air conditioning, we couldn't even let our kids outside to play, and we were a mile and a half away from the grow. It was awful. So we are here to say, please do not pass this.
So the new buffer that you guys proposed in this, two and a half miles would still now actually allow a grow across the street as we drive out the driveway. So it doesn't do enough yet, the two and a half miles is still not enough, specifically for what we experienced last year. At the same time, I wanna, I'm a farmer, I'm sensitive to nuisance odors and that kind of thing, but this went on for a month, and then after that, they didn't do anything with the crops, so the residue stayed there. And I called, I called the county and said, hey, can I bring my disc over and put that under, we're done with this. And it just sat there, nothing happened. So this isn't enough, but you're in a tough position, and I feel for these guys, this is their business, their living. So just wanna share that with you.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is Rachel Erhart Oberg.
Hi, my name is Rachel Erhart. Thank you for all the time you guys have put into this, Steve, Bill, the Board. I know you guys have been working on this more than anything else. I was, I've been born and raised here, I have my family here. I don't support the hemp being passed at all. We're tired of everything, you know, the smell, all of it. I realize that everybody can't be put in one box, but when it brings what it's bringing, it's just not something our county needs. Just being a proud resident and being an active member of Sutter County, it's embarrassing, especially when people come from out of town or out of state, and you know, they're like, what is, what is that? Is that a bunch of skunks? And it's like, no, it's, you know, it's hemp. So I know we aren't gonna rehash everything that we've already done, and we've been in meetings, and you guys know where I stand, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Matt Conant.
Yeah, it's different on this side of the aisle. Anyway, I'd just like to talk to you guys for a couple minutes about hemp, and you know, we've been on this battle for six years. And I just ask you to, you know, you got a letter from your Ag Commissioner opposing it, you got four superintendents that opposed it, and you had the Farm Bureau opposed it. And you know, the Ag Commissioner opposed it because they've had threats to their safety, attempted bribery, and there's some bad players, and I'm not saying all are bad players, but there are some. The school superintendents opposed it because they don't like the smell around the schools, and I get that. The Farm Bureau opposed it because it's not a viable crop, it hasn't proven it in the last six years to be a viable crop. There are many costs to the county, it's not just the $415,000. Bill, how many days and hours have you spent on hemp in the last couple of years, and your predecessors? How many hours have code enforcement spent on it? How many hours have the Sheriff's Department been on it to monitor it? These costs are probably at least another $200,000 in the last six years. I calculated last year, last meeting, at $550 per farmed acre, for the, each year that the acres were grown. $550 of taxpayers' money going to support a commodity that's never made any money. This doesn't make any sense. We have to save our money for fire departments and other issues, what we need to support our county. Our budget is not rich, we gotta be careful. And hemp is not proven to make money. I ask you, and I urge you to support your Ag Commissioner, your school superintendents, and your Farm Bureau. Thank you.
Thank you Mr. Conant.
Our next speaker is Maria Bravo.
Can you hear me now? A todos los trabajadores de tres rosas pueden pararse por favor para que vean ellos cuantos empleados tenemos? These are employees of our business. I come on behalf of Three Roses, I am a farm labor contractor, I have been doing business with Luke, CNC Farming. These employees that stand in front of you are dependent on their job, working in the hemp. They are good citizens, they get paid, they have homes, they have children, their hard earnings support and pay taxes to Sutter County. They are all here, they work every day, they are the most honest, hard-working employees that our company has. Luke, Tyler, Nicole, everybody that is involved with CNC Farming are good people, and I ask that you pass this ordinance. These employees are here begging you, do not take their jobs away from them. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is Luke Wilson.
All right, good afternoon Supervisors, first of all, I'd like to thank all of you, thank Steve, Bill, for, you know, sitting, talking with us over the last few months. I know all of us are ready to be done with this, but, my name is Luke Wilson, I'm one of the hemp farmers here today fighting to keep my business alive. My business, my business, my partners and I started here six years ago. At the last meeting, we were criticized for not having supporters present, so I reached out and asked a few of our employees, vendors, and buyers to show up today, so you can hear directly from them how hemp is a benefit to their lives and livelihoods. Many of them are also your constituents. By show hands, I'd like to ask all of our supporters and those who benefit from this ordinance, please raise their hand. Okay, thank you. As highlighted in the recent Economic Development Report, which was drafted using our actual production numbers from last year, our actual contracted price for this year multiplied by the actual acreage that we have contracts for this year, and then on the lower section of that, if you've seen it, is what we're already in contract negotiations for next year, showing 1,500 acres. The economic impact is something that benefits not only us farmers, but the businesses and local employees and their families that we support. We are generating sales, payroll, and income taxes, all of which benefit the county, just like any of the other major crops grown in the county. For the Yuba Sutter Farm Bureau to publicly state that this crop isn't viable in the county is irresponsible and not accurate. Today, you're gonna hear a lot of negative comments from the opposition, I'd like to address some of those directly. People are gonna talk about the smell and how hemp farming might impact the quality of their life. I think the two and a half mile buffer from sensitive areas is more than enough, I mean, we personally believe it's one and a half, but we'll give you guys two and a half miles.
I'm sorry, you're gonna, time's gonna be up there, but appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mike Cole.
I don't have a speech, but I'm here to support the hemp work that's being done. I was a PCA for 34 years, and also a farmer, and I want to personally apologize to Lisa, being out in the field for as many years I was, and by myself, especially in the bypass on a Sunday evening. I think that's totally unacceptable, but I feel like this ordinance, it's a one-year trial, and going from basically eliminating it in December, when the growers, and here we are with, you know, there isn't a crop that we can make, really make a nickel at right now, having a tough go. They took the sunflowers away here, the companies, and so we're left with just a very few things that we can make, make a nickel at, and the growers that are doing this had already put all their groundwork into it to eliminate it cold turkey, after they've, they've already got a significant monetary investment in this. It's a tough deal, so I support it, I'd love to see it just for one year, give it a try. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Jill LeVake.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board Members, my name's Jill LeVake, as mentioned, I'm lifelong resident, born and raised here in Yuba City. I'm actually reading a statement on behalf of Barbara LeVake, so she was on a previous planned trip. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on the newly drafted industrial hemp ordinance, I appreciate all the work that's went into this by staff, your Board, and others as previously mentioned. As many of you are aware, for the past 30 years, I have been in the business of advocating for agriculture, energy, and other interests. I come from a farming family in the San Joaquin Valley, and have been a member of California Women for Agriculture for decades, as long as also being a lifetime member of the Farm Bureau. Regarding hemp as an agricultural commodity, I want to point out for those of you that are not aware, that the California Department of Agriculture identifies hemp as an ag commodity, as does the Williamson Act. And Division 24 of that California Department Food and Ag Code provides for the cultivation of industrial hemp by registered growers, hemp breeders, and established agricultural research institutions. Growers pay a fee to the State of California and file for an application through the County Ag Commissioner's Office, paying those additional fees. I am a strong supporter of farmers and the right to farm. In my research and opinion, hemp is one of the most misunderstood plants. Hemp is not marijuana, it's a non-psychoactive variety of cannabis plant that has been used for many uses: health and wellness, biodegradable plastics, sustainable textiles, construction materials, and it's being used in other areas as well. Why should you support this ordinance? This is an opportunity for the county to say yes. To a crop that is sustainable, requires little water, does not need chemical pesticides, a yes vote is also supporting Sutter County agriculture and the associated businesses. Given the current state of the county budget and the fact that the county nor the city have been able to pass a sales tax, it makes good fiscal sense to welcome and embrace this new crop. Without going into details, I believe you have the Yuba Sutter EDC Economic Impact Analysis on hemp, and what it means to local businesses. I recognize that there have been very many bad actors already discussed, but that's in any business. The issue, however, I do want to thank the Ag Commissioner and the representative from Yuba Sutter Farm Bureau that met with us. I would respectfully request a yes vote on this ordinance and further consideration for a permanent ordinance with a sunset clause.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jesse Verdi.
Good afternoon Supervisors, my name is Jesse Verdi, I was born and raised in Yuba City. I'm a farm labor contractor in the Sutter County area, and our company's been in business for over 35 years. Hemp provided a solution for kept my people working when other jobs were disappearing. My workers, it's not just about the crops, but it's, it's jobs for real families that really look forward to going and coming to work. Unlike seasonal, some jobs, seasonal jobs with shrinking demand, hemp offers year-round potential planting, managing, and harvesting and processing. It's vital for keeping our workers employed and... It's vital for keeping our workers employed and consistently contributing to the local economy. Supporting this ordinance means supporting working families, keeping our local workforce active, strengthening the economy of Sutter County. I respectfully urge you to pass, not just for the farmers, but for many workers behind the scenes who keep helping Sutter County grow. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is Sarb Kingura.
Before Sarb speaks, I want to ask if anybody else has any cards, this will be the time to turn them in after Sarb's done. Well, we're not going to take any more speaker cards because we want to bring it back to the board, okay, for this topic. So if you have any and you're waiting till the last minute, fill it out now and turn it in to the clerk, please. Thank you.
Good afternoon, and thank you to the Board of Supervisors for the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Sarb Kingura, owner of Circle Irrigation, and I reside in District 3. When farmers succeed, businesses like mine and many others in the ag supply services and logistics area benefit also. Hemp supports more than just growers. It sustains small, local businesses, creates service jobs, and contributes to broader, the broader economy of Sutter County. It is also a water-wise crop that aligns with modern sustainability goals, something we encourage and support as an irrigation provider. This is about responsible growth and protecting the future of ag and ag-related jobs in Sutter County. It's about supporting the entire network of businesses, not just farms, but the supply chain and service providers that keep farms running. We want to see our community grow, smart, more sustainable, and with the freedom to adapt to market changes. The ordinance, this ordinance ensures accountability and structure while still giving farmers the freedom to adapt and stay competitive. It's a win for ag and small businesses and for the responsible use of our natural resources. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your comments. At this time, I'm going to direct the clerks not to accept any further cards, so please don't accept any further speaker cards, and then we'll go to the next speaker.
Our next speaker is Nevada Smith.
Hello, everyone and supervisors. Thank you for having us. I don't have a prepared speech, but I am a local farmer, and I believe Sutter County's backbone is farmers and business owners and landowners. And I don't want to see any more property rights being lost. We're giving, we might be giving up on hemp after six short years in, and there's a lot of other commodities in this county that if you look at their track record on the first six years, they probably weren't profitable either. Way back when, when peaches came and rice came, it takes a while to get this figured out. Right now, farmers do not have a lot of options to be profitable. And if this is one option, I think a one-year ordinance and try to rectify some of the bad apples and make it where it's appeasable as much as possible to all the people that live in town and might not understand agriculture. I think this ordinance could go a long ways to help this county. It's a stepping stone in the right direction, I see. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ravi Tiara.
Thank you, Board of Supervisors, for the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Ravi Tiara. I'm part of a family farming operation here in Sutter County. I come before you today to speak in strong support of the proposed hemp ordinance. As someone deeply connected to our local ag industry, I understand how vital flexibility is to stay productive and profitable. When market conditions shift, farmers need viable alternatives to do not, to not only keep their land in production, but also retain workers and continue contributing to the local economy. In the case of hemp, it provides for that flexibility to stay productive and profitable. It is not only a great opportunity for when markets shift, but also a valuable addition to our crop rotation plans, helping to improve long-term soil health, control erosion, and promote biodiversity. As farmers, we are constantly trying to find ways to keep our soil healthy for the longevity of our farming operations. Hemp is heavily regulated, has no black market appeal, and is non-psychoactive. It's grown to produce CBD products that help people with chronic pain, anxiety, PTSD, and epilepsy, as well as paper, clothing, textiles, animal feed, and plastics, to name a few. It's a real, practical, and responsible crop, not a drug, and not a threat. Furthermore, the USDA legalized the growing of hemp in the 2018 Farm Bill and made hemp-derived CBD products federally legal. Understanding community concerns, the new ordinance respectfully strikes a fair balance between promoting agricultural opportunity and community needs. The ordinance ensures that we continue farming in a way that supports our economy and protects our community standards. It gives farmers the ability to adapt when markets change to sustain our businesses, support our workers, and preserve the future of agriculture here in Sutter County. On behalf of local farmers, ag-based businesses, and our broader rural community, I should respectfully urge you to support this ordinance. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is Kristy Goldby.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing us to speak today. My name is Kristy Goldby. I am proud to stand before you not only as a lifelong member of this community, but I'm a second-generation small business owner. My family has been a part of this local economy for decades. I currently own and operate Headline Salon and Spa with my mom, Marcia, and we've been serving the community for 40 years. Today, I'm here to speak in strong support of a revised ordinance that would allow farmers in our area to grow hemp, industrial hemp. This isn't just a matter of agriculture. It's about opportunity, innovation, and wellness. At our salon and spa, we've witnessed firsthand the incredible benefits of CBD-infused products, both in services and retail. Since 2020, we've generated $94,000 in retail sales from CBD-based products alone. In 2024, we provided nearly $26,000 of services featuring CBD-enhanced treatments. These figures are not just numbers. They represent a real demand from real clients seeking safe, effective wellness solutions. These products have become an essential part of our offerings, from soothing muscle relief bombs used during massage treatments to skincare lines that reduce inflammation, promote healthy radiant skin. Our clients seek out these solutions because they work, they're safe, and they're natural. Let me be clear, CBD or cannabinoid oil is not the same as THC. It's non-intoxicating compound derived from hemp that does not give users high, a high. Our clients feel relaxed, not altered. They experience relief, not impairment. The products we use and sell are strictly regulated, ensuring compliance with federal guidelines and peace of mind for our guests. Supporting hemp farming locally would not only align with state and federal laws, but create, thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. And I just need to let everybody know we have about 30 minutes of comments left, so I'm going to give you guys a five-minute break, all of us a five-minute break. It's very important that we stretch and get our blood moving a little bit, otherwise we're going to need some of the hemp on our legs or something. But I think it's really important, so please take a stretch break, five minutes only, okay? Thank you.
Yubasutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at 530-749-8800. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties.
They're produced by Sapphire Sign Company, providing something small, large, and mobile. With decades of experience, Sapphire Signs has pioneered local production of a variety of signs, like temporary campaign-style signs, welcomes for unique events, building signage, event promotion, and vehicle customization. Need a sign? Make it a gem from Sapphire Sign Company, on the web at sapphirmarketinggroup.net. Sapphire.
We call that a Flores Five Minutes. It's more like 10 minutes, but...
It's more like 10 minutes, but please take your seats. And if I could ask you to, if you're outside or whatever, please come in. We're going to get this meeting back on track. Okay, we'll call it back to order, and we'll have the next public speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Brian Greathouse.
Evening supervisors. My name is Brian Greathouse. I'm the president of the Yuba Sutter Farm Bureau. Please refer to our letter of opposition of the new ordinance for industrial cultivation of hemp. This letter is included in your packet. I know you guys have a chance to read it. If you have any questions, I can answer those. But just in really brief, in closing, we oppose the ordinance and keep the ban on industrial hemp cultivation in Sutter County, and we support our ag commissioner in her report. So again, please oppose the ordinance and keep the ban on cultivation of hemp. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Courtney Tumani.
Sorry.
There you go.
Good evening. My name is Courtney Tumani. I am a longtime, born and raised in Yuba City. I attended Sutter High School, class of '05. I work in education. I'm a speech-language pathologist, and I work in a farming community. I am lucky enough to be married to Tyler Tumani, so I am going to speak on his behalf the rest of his speech. And I also wanted to thank Armando for your speech. It was very moving, and I appreciate all of the work that everyone does. Okay. This is bigger than just one crop. This is about supporting farming in Sutter County and the ancillary local businesses serving farmers, not just certain crops, not just certain farmers, but all of us. If we allow misinformation or personal grievances to shape policy, we will lose. So today, I ask for fairness, equity, and the following state law that requires the issuance of registrations when the state law requirements are met. Counties cannot lawfully prohibit farming this state-mandated crop. I am asking you to reasonably consider the facts and state law, not the fear, to support responsible farmers who are doing things the right way, and to give this crop and the good people who grow it a fair chance to succeed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is Nick Sopolo.
Hi, my name's Nick Sopolo. I'm COO of Rising Sun Exports. We buy CBD isolate from CNC Farming, Luke and Tyler, and we export it overseas to Japan. And I just kind of wanted to make you guys aware of what the international market for this agricultural commodity is looking like. When I started in Japan, the market was maybe, you know, $2, $3 million a year. That would be 2019. It's grown to about $115 million a year since then, and is projected to grow, you know, to about $750 million by 2030. Globally, you're looking at about an $8 to $11 billion market, depending on who you ask, compared to crops you guys grow locally here. The walnut market's about $8.7 billion. The plum market is about $11 billion. Rice market's about $300 billion. And we're looking at growth rates in the CBD space 20% to 25%. So by 2030, you're looking at a global market $48 billion to $200 billion. So I would ask that, you know, you give all of the farmers in your county the opportunity to participate in what's going to be a rapidly expanding global market in this agricultural commodity. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is JR Tiara.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and the county supervisors. I'm sorry, the chairman. Sorry about that, Mr. Dan Flores, and members of the community and staff. Anyway, my name is JR Tiara. My family arrived in Live Oak in 1906. Some will argue 1907, but we have been farming going into our nearly 120th year in these two communities. And the majority of those 120 years, I've never seen the history of a moratorium placed on a farmer to grow a farming product, never, until now. And that's a very serious issue. It's unprecedented, these moratoriums. Granted, we've got an aroma issue. And yes, I understand sewer plants smell, treatment plants smell. The prune dehydrators at SunSuite and all the farmers that grow prunes smell. Hemp smells. Probably hemp's the least worst, if you have had to live by one. But those aromas are aromas, and that's part of the right to farm law, right? It's just part of farming, noise, dust, you got it. People are going to make money this year, finally. The pioneers in this industry are going to be profitable, where we've crossed over the bridge to industry, and that's where hemp is. It's an industrial product, okay? And so we have opportunities. The smell, we've talked about it, we've mitigated it. You did a good job. I applaud you. I really applaud you, not losing our eyes on the ball of the economic opportunity we have. We're facing financial turmoil in this county. And so the future, we have to find as farmers, the farming commodity, the package we have as a farming community, is not enough funding to fund the counties anymore, this county. So farmers and our leaders have to get together and find out alternatives to boost our income, okay? Sales tax and all these other bonds, and this taxing our people isn't the solution. Farmers grow money on trees, bushes, and plants from the dirt. We mint new money. So my courage is, please, follow your gut here and meet the emerging industry of packaging, because hemp is the only solution to solve the sustainable packaging problem by 2030, that they have to be 25% sustainable. Hemp is the only product.
Okay, thank you for your comments, sir.
Our next speaker is Dan Woodhead.
Hi, my name's Dan Woodhead. I'm a concerned citizen and supporter of hemp, and this is the remainder of Luke Wilson of CNC Farming's speech from earlier. He was cut off early. People are going to potentially bring up alleged crimes committed by hemp growers or around hemp farms. This was somewhat true in 2019 and 2020, when hemp was new, thefts did happen. There was perception that hemp crops were valuable like marijuana, but that problem has gone completely away. We haven't had a theft related to hemp in over three years. Agricultural theft, like stealing copper, wire, pumps, or walnuts, happens to all farmers, not just hemp farmers. Even the sheriff's office has reported that hemp-related calls have dropped dramatically in recent years. Some will claim that all hemp growers are really running illegal cannabis operations. That is completely false. We farm high CBD industrial hemp, and we must pass state-mandated compliance tests ensuring our hemp is below 0.3% THC. We harvest it legally, dry it in the field, grind it with repurposed rice combines, and sell it to legitimate buyers in other states. Our material is refined into CBD crude oil, not THC products, and it is sold around the world. You may also hear that hemp puts a burden on the ag department or county resources. That's why the new ordinance requires every hemp grower to submit $7,500 deposit, which covers all county staff time related to enforcement and oversight. If the deposit drops below 50%, growers must replenish it within 14 days or forfeit their license. All this being said, we are responsible, upstanding farmers who have dedicated the last six years of our lives and a substantial amount of money to build a legitimate business here in Sutter County. We are asking you to approve this ordinance to protect our right to farm a state-mandated crop, enabling us to continue farming hemp responsibly, respectfully, and successfully right here at home, all the while expanding the local economy. Thank you.
Thank you, right on time.
Our next speaker is Stephanie Rosinio.
Hi, I'm one of those Yuba Sutter residents who was a Marysville Indian and gave birth to a couple of honkers, so I'm kind of on both sides of the fence. But anyway, I wanted to give you a quote that this guy who everybody thinks I've met personally, his name was Abraham Lincoln, and he says, "You can please some of the people all of the time," all of the people, or "some of the people some of the time, but no way can you please all of the people all of the time." Although if you'd like to try with me, please let me know. I've got a lot of nice things. But any rate, I wanted to know if you remembered that the statistics about 10 years ago, for every $1 you collect in a farm, it benefits $4 to the community? And we heard them talk about different industries and things like that, so it's beneficial. And I don't think it's a secret to everyone that our economy is going down, our state is bankrupt, either the feds take over or New California takes over. Either way, we need money, we need industry. We've got a bunch of, excuse me, families there, and they've got a lot of markets, and they have a product to give them. Well, let them go for it. But maybe you can have a caveat, extra, all the bad people, the bad players, have consequences. You know, why don't you have Elon Musk find out what they're doing bad and sic the sheriff on them? But if not, think about it, why don't you challenge them to do something about the smell? Like, oh, I don't know, activate a charcoal, for one. Put it up around it to mitigate the smell for your neighbors, be good neighbors. It's as simple as that. So because of the economy going down, because here's a viable industry, and because you're in charge, put some conditions on it to make the neighbors happy and the industry that can help, that benefits from it, help them out. Go for it. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Florentina DiGennaro.
Hi, supervisors. I'm here as a parent. It's unfortunate that we don't have much more of those. I want to shed a light to all aspects that will be affected, not just the ones that are here speaking that are going to fill their pockets and have these opportunities. There's also families that have nothing to do with their industry, they just work regular jobs, that live next to these places and farms, that will be greatly affected. I personally have a daughter that goes to high school and children that go to elementary, and they also have severe allergies. If you research the data, there's doctors and there's other families down in San Diego and Cenitas Riverside where they've had these farms where there were severe, not just mild, severe allergic reactions. The doctors, they would have their reports. So we have to look at all, everyone who's going to be affected. And again, I'm going to repeat, I'm sad that these other families are not here to speak up. Personally, if I was living close and I was going to be affected, it also affects, I would leave. I would not stay there and have to deal with this smell. This is an honest, you know, just a mom, parent, family comment that I'm making. I'm also going to address it to the comunidad latina. Nosotros hemos superado tantas cosas. Necesitamos mirar de todos quién van a estar afectados, ¿verdad? Ustedes están recibiendo dinero de estas farmers, pero hay otros lugares que pueden trabajar. Mi familia hizo fresa, manzanas, trabajaron en muchos otros lugares. Necesitamos mirar quiénes van a ser afectados. Ustedes viven allí, van a tener sus hijos allí, oliendo el olor, yendo a la escuela, tienen reacciones alérgicas que van a estar afectadas. Everyone, you need to just see the whole point of everyone's comment and who is going to be affected in this. Even though I do use hemp, I love hemp products.
Okay, we'll have to ask you to stop. Thank you.
One thing is buying products, and another thing is living in a city where the farms are at.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is Brandon Barnes.
Good afternoon, Chair, Honorable members of the board. I'm Brandon Barnes, our Sutter County Sheriff. And this is a challenging issue, right? I understand that. And I really want to take the time to say thank you to everybody who took the time to come here today and express their opinions. You know, I find myself probably in an awkward spot like much of you, because there's two sides to this, right? On one hand, we certainly want to uphold the Constitution, and people have a right to do something legal on their property without the government's overreach. The other side of that is what we've heard, right? There's those bad actors and that criminal element. You know, I fully appreciate the farmers that are here today, and I fully believe they're legitimate business owners, and they've got money and investments here in Sutter County. But then there's the other side of it. Our ag commissioner has outlined in her letter, you know, bribes, threats, things that have been reported to my office and are currently under investigation in some respects. Well, why does that happen? It certainly doesn't happen because of hemp, right? It happens because of marijuana. Many times, you'll go out and the plants will be gone, they'll be removed. It's because they're spiking the THC levels to create marijuana. Our CAO acknowledged that there was a warehouse that had marijuana in it that was labeled as hemp. Well, why does that happen? Well, because marijuana is still valuable. It's 22% more profitable if you ship it to the East Coast. And so there are those bad actors that are doing that. And I think that, you know, if we are to pass this and were to go after those bad actors, resources are needed. I would very much like to go out with the ag department every day, but we're understaffed. We're strained, as are many county departments. To put more on us without giving us the proper resources to combat the problem doesn't make a lot of sense. And I'm not advocating for more deputies, perhaps it's armed code enforcement officers or whatever the case may be. So I hope you will give that due consideration. The other thing, because I know time's limited, I want to just point out that if you were to pass the ordinance, I fear that some of the farmers could still find themselves in a bad position, because the penal code, specifically 372 of the penal code, specifically outlines what a public nuisance is, and it is a misdemeanor. And it says in California, anything that injures somebody's health, offends someone, prevents the free use of property, or interferes with a community's enjoyment of life and property, and in this case, a community can be included to be an actual community, neighborhood, or a significant amount of people. So when we're talking about the smell out at high schools and football games and things like that, the growers could still find themselves in violation of the law, not just the ordinance. And so I think there needs to be a little bit more time and consideration to kind of bet that out. Lastly, I will say, most of what I'm trying to share is just based off questions I've got, so I'm a little all over the place. But when I make decisions in my profession, I go to the experts if I don't know the answer. And you have a letter from our ag commissioner, and you have a letter from the Farm Bureau. And who better understands agriculture and farming in our community here in Sutter County than those two entities? And so I would just ask that you give their recommendations the proper weight as you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our next public speaker is Craig Herbert.
Good afternoon, board. Just wanted to mention a couple of things. If your board passes this ordinance, unfortunately, you can't control who's growing this stuff. And that there are bad apples, and that is unfortunate. You will be putting county staff in harm's way, required for them to do their required jobs and do these inspections. And I'll bet none of you, none of you board members, would put your wife, your son, or your daughter to do these inspections, which is required by their job. So I would request that you amend your ordinance to allow the sheriff's department, require a deputy to escort these folks to do their job, and let the growers pay for it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our next public speaker is Steve Roach.
Hello. I'm Steve Roach. I live out in Sutter, retired naval officer. I've spoken to you before about these issues. Sympathetic to the farming issues, the workers' issues, the economic issues that are in play here, but there's one elephant in the room that no one is talking about, and it's the children of Sutter County. And they're also not talking about THC. California currently has an emergency order out banning the sale of any edible products that contain THC, the psychoactive component that's in marijuana. The reason stated was that it posed a significant and immediate threat particularly to underage users who are drinking hemp-derived THC products, whether it's vapes, whether it's gummies, whether it's sports drinks. There is a significant issue with drug There is a significant issue with drug abuse in our schools with underage kids because of the proliferation of these products. You can go online and find thousands of them, and it is hemp-derived THC. I've spoken to the supervisor, superintendent of schools in the county, who said he shares the concern. He said 10 years ago, his substance abuse issues were nine out of a 10 was alcohol. Now nine out of 10 of it is THC. And a significant proportion of that is hemp-derived THC. So we have all these other issues with hemp that people are going to talk about, and they're certainly germane, excuse me. But the one that really concerns me is the farm bill, which relaxed restrictions as compared to marijuana, and allowed the THC which is derived from hemp through after-harvest processing and cracking with chemicals and gases into oils that are then put into these products, allows them to be sold without testing for impurities, heavy metals, mold, that sort of stuff, without regulation, without taxes, into underage kids. You need to address that in the context of any consideration of hemp going forward in the county. Thanks.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Megan Madioli.
My name is Megan Madioli, and I'm a proud fourth-generation farmer, here on behalf of my family's farm, Madioli Brothers. We operate a diversified farm, growing tomatoes, rice, corn, and more. Diversification helps us manage risk and protect our livelihood from unstable markets. To us, hemp is simply one more crop that allows us to meet our most important goals: keeping our farm running, our employees working, and supporting the heart of Sutter County, our local economy, and small businesses. Since I was young, I've watched my family work seven days a week, long hours, endless responsibilities, constant sacrifice, all to keep food on your table. Every year brings new challenges: stolen machinery, broken equipment, unpredictable weather, constant illegal dumping of trash on our properties. But bills don't wait. Property taxes are due, landlords must be paid, and most importantly, our employees, who are part of our extended farm family, have children to feed. We do all of this without complaint and with resilience and deep pride of what we do. There has been speculation about our intentions and integrity, so let me be very clear: illegal activity has no place in our fields or in our community. We approach every crop we grow, including hemp, with responsibility, honesty, and heart. Hemp on our farm is cultivated for legitimate uses, such as topical creams that help veterans and others manage chronic pain without relying on opioids. Mr. Roach, I believe, was referring to Delta 8 and Delta 10, which can be derived from hemp, and I wanted to let everybody know that that is illegal in California, so that would not apply to our local schools. This ordinance reflects what happens when farmers, officials, and the community members come together to find a responsible solution.
I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up, please.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further?
We have no further public comments, but I would like to note for the record that we did receive four letters in support of hemp farming, one signed petition, and one letter in response to the ag commissioner's letter. And then we received four letters in opposition to hemp farming. And in January, we also received letters from Breton Elementary, Livo Unified School District, and Sutter Union High School in opposition of hemp farming.
Okay, and those will be submitted for public record? Okay, thank you. Okay, no other comments, and we're going to bring it back now to the board for discussion. Sorry? Go ahead and tell me what...
Close the public hearing.
Yeah, sorry, I need to officially close the public hearing, and then we'll bring it back to the board now for discussion. Also, some of you spoke, the board may want to ask you some clarifying questions, and that's actually okay, once we bring it to that, back to the board. So I just wanted to inform you of that, okay? So I'm going to open it up to board comments, and I'm going to start with Supervisor Boone.
Well, I appreciate everybody coming out today. It's, this is a pretty difficult, difficult decision to make. I am a third-generation farmer, or up in District 1 area, and farm other locations in, throughout Sutter County, and I believe in the Right to Farm Act 100%. Some of the people and farmers that are here today, I actually am a walnut broker, and I deal with them as well. We're all searching for that magic, that magic wand, what's it going to be this year? What's it going to, you know, we're trying to figure out how to make ends meet. I spent a lot of hours with our attorney, coming up with something that I thought was pretty close, and I spoke to Luke and a few times, and Tyler, and we tried to come up with something that, that would be fair to everyone, and I think we're really close. I think we're really close. I think that, I think there's not enough information personally in our communities. I've, the last two days, my phone has literally rang off the hook. I took my phones and turned the ringers off, and then they start vibrating. I don't have any time to, to deal with anything else, and we just came back from conferences in Sacramento for five days, and they were still ringing then. There's a lot of people that called that aren't here today, and that are against hemp. And I think, I think that Luke and Tyler needs to do some more due diligence. I think they should have had town hall meetings in, say, Livo, one in Yuba City, and maybe one in South County. Give the public the information they need so that we can make that decision and make it right. I don't like the idea of our employees being threatened or bribed. That, that really irritates me. But if you want to play this game, and let's do this on the up and up, I say that we need to table this for a couple of weeks and give you guys an opportunity to put it out in the public, and give the public a chance to speak up against it. You can't just have one meeting here today to try to call it. I don't think that's the right way to do it. I personally believe in having a couple more meetings out in the public, in the public's eye, not just here at the dais. And with that being said, I also think that, that maybe we should separate the processing part of the ordinance from the farming portion as well. And I think that we've had that drafted already, and Gina has that, it's just something that I think we should consider. That way, I think there's different parameters for the processing part, and there is a farming it, and I think we need to have that divided, and that's, that's my opinion.
Okay, thank you Supervisor. Other Supervisor comments? Supervisor Stevens?
All right, well, this has been interesting. One of the things I've, I've come to the conclusion of in the last few weeks is, you are all right out there. Whichever side you're on, you're right. There are those issues on both sides. I'm a farmer, I have been a farmer, and, you know, if I had some, if I was doing something good and trying to do good for this community, and somebody was trying to tell me that, that I shouldn't be farming it, I would have a problem with that. But I also have a problem with a product being used as vaping and everything. But the other day, I, or the other evening, I was at a meeting out in Pleasant Grove, and there's a CHP officer out there, and he was telling us this last year that there was 90 confirmed deaths due to DUIs, drunk driving. Where, where's outcry for that? I don't think hemp, we have that problem with hemp. Hemp doesn't have those kinds of capabilities. Now, yes, it's being disguised as marijuana, maybe, but you can't, we're, as a public, a lot of times, we try to, we try to solve the problem instead of putting the fault on where it belongs, it's with the people who do bad things. And I have a real hard time if somebody's out there doing, trying to do the right things and actually ends up getting, getting in trouble because they're doing the right thing. There was, oh, I was, another thing, I was watching a movie, same thing. The wine industry, beer industry, they all, they all get celebrated for what they do. You know, the, you drink a fine bottle of wine, you get, you can win an award. Beer, you know, how many of us are going to go out after this meeting and have a beer, or drink a glass of wine, or heaven forbid, smoke a joint, if that's what they still call it these days, because I don't smoke, so I, I don't know what it's called, but it's, it's what we do, you know? If gambling, how many people are affected by gambling? And then we're talking about a commodity that has very little impact, has a lot of good impacts, it can have bad impacts, but it has a lot of good impacts too. But we're punishing the people, if we don't go forward with the exemptions of what we're, we're saying, we're punishing the people who are trying to do it right, and, and I'm not for that. Thank you, Chu.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Stevens. I guess Supervisor Ezekiel Meyer, next.
I want to thank everyone for showing up here today. I know it's 4 o'clock, 4 o'clock in the afternoon, you've been here for an hour and a half. So originally, I called for the vote to ban hemp. Right, if you all remember that, that was a few weeks ago, last month. And when we all make our decisions up here, we look at the information gathered and given. My district, we had the lights that were in issue, we had the hemp grow 1,000 feet, we had hoop house complaints. So we looked at those complaints, and one of the biggest things is, we wanted to figure out with county council, how we could, we could address the issues at hand, and where, where the complaints were coming from. So we came up with the two-and-a-half-mile zone. We got rid of the hoop houses. We got rid of, which added in the two-and-a-half-mile bumper zone to the schools. So we threw, we basically put an ordinance together that had teeth that would protect a community and protect other growers. Now, over the last few days, I've been texting those bullet points and ordinances to community members and community leaders, and showing this, because it was imperative that everyone had the right information. So they knew what the map looked like, because it's tough, when you look at that map, you got to bring it up on an iPad or a computer, you can't bring it up on your phone, you got to really look, because it just, the shades, the different colors, it doesn't really, it almost has to be explained to you on what really, what transpires, because there was a lot of people in my district, actually, here today, that talked about it being right there. So when people asked me in the district, "Well, Mike, I don't want to hear, I don't want to smell it or see it from the football field," I said, "I'm on the football fields every Thursday and Friday night, darn near." I said, "I was one of the first ones complaining about this." This took it away from there. It's gone. Now, we talk about farming, and we talk about the industry that's here today. I work for a company that's been around for 79 years, building agriculture machinery. So I speak to a lot of suppliers and a lot of other distributors throughout the state of California, throughout the world in general, and everyone is hurting. I myself used to farm, I used to farm rice. Gave it up, lost too much money in it, wasn't worth it, it's too tough. I don't know how you guys do it for a living out here, because it is tough, I have no hair now. But farmers have diversified over the years, no different than everyone else. We lost the sunflower crop. Our almonds and walnuts were in the tank for a few years, now they're slowly starting to come back. They say the peaches are going to take a tank here soon. And you look at rice at $8 a sack, people aren't selling a lot of equipment. I see a lot of tractor salesmen in the back there, a lot of farmers that are hurting real bad, real bad. And I talked to a couple of business owners that have cut over 2/3 of their staff, 2/3 don't have a job. Right? That is really tough, when you look at a person, you got to let them go, and they got a family. That's the toughest thing in the world. But I've wrestled with this over the last few weeks, and I was a hard no against this, hard no. I led the fight, I believe in this, because I don't believe we had an ordinance that was in place on this. But here's the kicker, though. I also believe this should be a vote of the people. I believe that there should be town hall meetings put together by those that want to push this through. And this ordinance is till December, if approved. This is not an forever ordinance. That's what I really want to explain to everyone here in the crowd and everyone watching on TV, this is not forever. This is something that we're trying to get by. I speak with Lisa Herbert two or three, four times a day. All right, we get along great. And when I heard about what was going on, matter of fact, if we do vote on this ordinance, I'm going to add in the ordinance that the growers or whatever, growers or in the industry cover the cost of a deputy going out there. So Brandon, you're going to let us know if, hey, this is what it's going to cost? And if you feel for your safety, you should have someone going out there, and the grower or in that industry? Because that is the one thing, from this industry, it's like you, I don't want to, I don't want to go against those that are doing it the right way, I believe, that have been doing it the right way. There are some great families in here that we all know have been farming here in the state of California for years. A matter of fact, I believe the Madioli, Madioli family's been farming for, what, about 70-something years? And it's hard for me to tell a farmer, and that's what they do for a living, that they can't farm a commodity that is legal in the state of California when they haven't or haven't heard that they've done anything that is related to marijuana, or a marijuana grow. But if you've read this ordinance, you will see that if you are caught doing something that you're not supposed to, you will lose your license. And you will never get your license again. That is all part of the ordinance. Look at the bullet points. Matter of fact, can we bring the bullet points up, please? Because I don't believe a lot of people have read the 17-page ordinance. Matter of fact, I asked Bill to put the bullet points on the main, and so you could actually read what it's all about. But, like I said, I believe this should go to a vote of the people, and let the hemp growers, come December, you gather the signatures, you have the town hall meetings, invite us to the town hall meeting so we could see how things go, and let the people vote on it, if they want to allow it. I got a feeling that you'd probably get more votes your way if they actually had the discussions that I've had with growers and business leaders and community leaders and school leaders. I've talked to all throughout the week, and I've had a lot of people saying that, "Mike, we support this ordinance because we like the teeth that it has in the ordinance." This is not a five-page ordinance that is just, "Hey, grow it, there's no rules." There's a lot of rules in this ordinance, and if you go through them, you're going to see that these guys aren't going to have, we're not going to give them a inch here. This is it right here, so if it's... But, like I said, look at the ordinance, and look for yourself. But I do believe this should go before the people, and let them decide on it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Supervisor. Can I ask legal counsel to go ahead and give us an overview of the ordinance, since we actually haven't done that? I mean, we had a brief overview from the CAO, but could you just go down the points of the ordinance? I think it's an important exercise.
Absolutely. Primarily, what the ordinance covers is in the staff report. And essentially, what it does is, we have two regulations, one setting up for processing and one is for cultivation. We're treating them separately. For the purposes of the cultivation, and, well, and for processing, both require a license. The license is good for one year, it automatically ends at the end of that year. If you're going to apply for... It automatically ends at the end of that year. If you're going to apply for a license, you're going to have to put down a deposit that's intended to cover all of the costs. It's to recover the actual costs related to review issuance, administration, enforcement of the license at the direct charge rates approved by the Sutter County Auditor Controller. So with regard to Supervisor Ziegemeyer's request, that's already included in there.
It's already there. That's what I want clarification on. Okay, thank you.
Any amount that the county spends in enforcing this ordinance or any aspect of this ordinance is billed against that deposit.
Okay, thank you.
Failure to, to refill the deposit in the event that it is used would then be grounds to revoke the license. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, I think that's pretty clear. And like you said, the rest is detailed in the staff report as well. I just want to make sure, are all the supervisors clear on the proposal on the table? Yes, okay. Then if there are no further comments from the supervisor, the chair would entertain a motion.
No, I'm going to, no, I'm going to, I just wanted to clarify to those in the public that this is, what this is, is a trial period till December. What is it? Would be December 26? December 16. December 16, hemp growers, those out here that are in this process, I would recommend you get your town halls together. And I'd recommend you get your signatures together. Because the next time, this is going to vote of the people. We're going to let the people vote on this, because that's where this should go. Shouldn't go to five supervisors, should go to the vote of the people.
Okay, Supervisor Stevens, you wanted to recognize an audience member?
Yes. Could Luke or Tyler come up to the podium, please? And I have a couple of questions I'd like to get answered. Just, so there's two things that concern me. Talk to me about processing and processing licensing. Do we have a processing facility here in Sutter County? Have we had a processing facility here in Sutter County? What's the process?
So processing can mean a few different things. Like, there's the oil extraction processing, and then there's the processing of screening the stick out of the material after we harvested, just making it, I mean, the material's really lightweight when it's dry. And so we try to maximize what's on a truckload. So we're really out there farming molecules, the CBD molecules. So they're tiny, they're microscopic. And so we want to get as many of those on a truck as possible. So we're refining, we're basically machine harvesting everything, screening the stick out, and putting it into bags and putting it on trucks. So that is defined as processing. And yes, we've been doing that since day one. When you guys shut the industry down at the last meeting was the first we heard that we needed a processing license for the storage and, you know, storing our material and doing what we do. When we started this business, we didn't need one. We don't need one in another county. But we're aware that we need one now. But it's impossible for us to get if you guys aren't offering them. But if you guys give us this ordinance, I'll be in the office tomorrow. We'll get it taken care of.
Okay. And one more question. I heard you referred to that you had the contracts for this year. One of the reasons we're here today and is that you already had the contracts in for this year. And then, so we're feeling pressure that because you have these contracts, we're in this position. So I think, I heard you say you're already looking to, for contracts for next year, too. So if this ordinance, if we put it in place and it doesn't play out, then if you're already signing contracts, I, you know, I don't want to be put in this position again where you have contracts and, and we're trying to figure all this out.
Oh, we understand. We understand. I mean, part of this business, since we started, is building the industry. You know, we have, I mean, these guys that we do business with, they want us to do more this year. And we're, you know, we're, we're still growing. We can't do it all at once. So it's, it's, it's a growth process. And so we set multi-year goals as a business. And so we, each year, we step up, step up, and, you know, it's all about the future. I mean, that's what we got to do in farming, is set a plan and, you know, execute it over multiple years.
But do you realize that if this doesn't work out, you could lose those contracts next year?
Absolutely.
An excellent job if this goes, gets you in a position where you've signed contracts and you can't fulfill them?
No, absolutely. No, I, we fully intend to, I mean, farm just like we have been since we started. And, you know, we really take, you know, a little sense of responsibility to, and give it a good, we're farmers, we're members, you know, category as these guys that are giving it, like, I mean, we didn't, we weren't even aware of the, that Lisa was having. So, you know, we're well aware now and we want to work together, you know, make it right.
Through the chair. So, this decision, I'm per, make this vote. This isn't because of you. This isn't because of not even everyone in this room. This is from those that I've talked to. I respect the Farm Bureau. I respect, respect Lisa Herbert. I respect our sheriff, our district attorney, my constituents. And that's why it's real, have to make this decision, because I gather all that, you know, after speaking with everyone. I put them all together. And after talking with one of the superintendents today, and they read through the bullet points and they looked at, wow, if these guys slip up, they're done. I mean, they're done. And you have no one to blame but yourself. You're done. We're shutting you down. And I'm going to sleep like a baby at night after that, because I'm not making this decision. I'm making this decision because the American farm, farms shut down between 2017 and 2022 in the state of California. That's scary. There'll be a lot of farms shutting down this year as well, especially with the commodity prices where they're at. We're asking, we're demanding, all right. One thing I left out, rid of the hoop houses. You when you have plants coming up, and I say, when plants are coming up in the middle of the night disappearing, we're never going to hear about that ever again, because this ordinance gets rid of hoop houses. It gets, it gets rid of all the nitty gritty, all the stuff that we had, all the complaints about. Because I never had one complaint from your farm whatsoever. But I knew the other ones, that's where the complaints were coming from. Because I'd get them throughout, because it was in my district. But those are gone. All right. But listening to the sheriff, and I spoke with, with air quality yesterday, too, about smells and said, that's a whole nother beast. And just know that this is a tough decision, but we do make this decision because we've had an overwhelming support from growers in this area. Ag growers that don't just grow rice, tomatoes, prunes, peaches, safflower, wheat, everything that they can to make a living. And right now.
I'm going to entertain a motion. I'd also to reminder to the Board of Supervisors, we have a budget meeting following this, and we need all of your participation 100% tonight. So call home. Making it to dinner. So just want you to know. Okay. So I'd entertain a motion with that regard.
Bring this.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve staff's recommendation with the inclusion of our agricultural commissioner upon her request that was made earlier, and also allowing the sheriff's department to provide deputy for those visits that are made to these sites and those, and I guess amending the, the ordinance by increasing the fee from $7,500 to $15,000 to make sure our sheriff's department was covered for those additional staff members if needed.
Okay.
That would be a change to Section 412-100A, and that would change to $15,000. And then also with regard to the processing, that would be changing in Section A to $15,000.
That's correct. That's my motion.
Okay. Thank you for the motion. Legal Counsel, can I repeat the entire motion before, before we go for a second?
Yes, I can. The motion is to move recommended action subject to the addition of the report request requirement that was made by the Agriculture Commissioner, also subject to a change in, in Section 412-110, changing $2,500 to $15,000.
Yuba Sutter Lives local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage
And
in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumaslake self-storage.com.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at 530-749-8800. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties.
You've seen signs marking some of the gems in Marysville. They're produced by Sapphire Sign Company, providing something small, large, and mobile. With decades of experience, Sapphire Signs has pioneered local production of a variety of signs, like temporary campaign style signs, welcomes for unique events, building signage, event promotion, and vehicle customization. Need a sign? Make it a gem from Sapphire Sign Company. On the web at sapphirmarketinggroup.net. Sapphire.